Good evening and welcome to the February 2022 Tanahapi Kipsey Zoning Board of Appeals. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is founded one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting is a hybrid format. The public is able to participate in person at town or remotely via Zoom, video conferencing, or by telephone, or you can participate in a public hearing by clicking the link that's on the website. I'll do the roll. Diane? She is here. Yeah, I see you checked in, but I think you're muted.
Okay. How about now?
Now, okay.
Okay.
Tony G?
Hello?
Yep. I'm here. Art?
I'm here.
Larry?
Here.
Christine?
Here.
Okay. Phyllis?
Here.
And Tony S?
Here.
Okay. And Simona?
I'm here.
All right. We have a full complement of our full members, so unless there's a recusal, the alternate members will not be voting and will vote. If they do have to vote, we'll vote alternately with Tony S. first and then Simona second if there are two recusals or more. Okay? So that brings us to item number one, Stuart Shop. That I'm making a motion to have that adjourned until the March 14th, 2022, meeting.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right. That motion carries. The next is Diamond Storage. That was adjourned to March, but I understand there's been some additional information that's been submitted. Does anybody have any concerns? Well, first of all, is there anybody from Diamond Storage here?
Hi, Chairman, Members of the Board. This is Jennifer Gray from KMB, here on behalf of Diamond Point Development. I'm also joined tonight by Chris Lapine from Chazen, as well as the applicants Jason Somer and Aaron Somer.
Okay.
If you like, we can walk you briefly through the changes that we made in response to comments from the last meeting. But as you mentioned, we are not here for the continued public hearing. We're here for a discussion item, really, to get your feedback on the changes that we did make in response to your comments. You know, we are due to return back to the planning board so they can complete their seeker review, but we certainly don't want to advance a plan with them that the ZBA is not comfortable with. So we want to come back, make sure we're on the right track, and have this discussion with you. So if you like, we can go through the summary of the plans.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. Fantastic. So if you recall last month, you asked us to consider whether we could step back that fourth story. We came to seeking a parking variance and a height variance to have three stories, I'm sorry, to have four stories where three stories are permitted. And we had started looking preliminarily at that concept of stepping back the fourth floor and noted that if that fourth story is stepped back, it's likely we would need additional variance, like a lot coverage variance and rear yard setback variance, so we could capture that lost square footage. So we did sharpen our pencils and came up with plans that are before you tonight. It does include a 35-foot step back on the fourth story. It also, it maintains a reduction in the existing impervious surface coverage. So the proposed condition would reduce the total impervious surface coverage as compared to what's existing on site today. It does add a lot coverage variance and a rear yard setback variance. I want to note briefly, there was one mistake in the letter that I submitted dated February 2nd, and that was with respect to the parking variance. I did state, I'm sorry, excuse me. I got that. The joys of working from home. I did state in the letter that the parking variance remained unchanged. The parking variance did increase slightly because of the increase in the square footage of the building. We, the parking variance that we're seeking will increase, whereas previously that there was 45 spaces required, there will now be 50 spaces required due to the increased square footage of the building. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to the applicant, or, I'm sorry, Jason Somer has a summary for you that really walks through why we needed to increase the square footage of the building due to some inefficiencies that were created by stepping back that fourth story. And from there, we can turn it over to Chris to walk through some of the changes to the plan itself. We also submitted revised renderings to show you a variety of viewpoints of the building, both with the landscaping and without the landscaping that's proposed. So that we turn it over to Jason Somer.
Jennifer, do you think it might help if, and sorry, no, no, no. Do you think it might help if I walk through the revised layout and then ask you to speak to the reason why we've had to modify some of this configuration a little bit?
Sure. Absolutely. Go on, Chris. Thank you.
I'm gonna share my screen here. There's a lot going on on the screen here at my. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So as Jennifer spoke to, we did step the fourth floor back 35 feet, and we are still maintaining that 40-foot minimum front yard setback from Route 9, as indicated in your code. Where we started to experience some changes here is in the rear of the parcel here, which is the eastern side of the parcel. Where, because of the setback that's taking place internally here, we've had some inefficiencies in terms of the construction and available store space, which the applicant will go into a little bit more detail on. But our focus for where we were going to encroach, we tried to do it in an area where it wasn't visual in nature, as it would be if we were encroaching within a setback either along the frontage of the property or either on the two sides, because both of the two sides are also visible from the Route 9 corridor. So we tried to focus this encroachment, if we were going to do one, towards the rear of the parcel, because it's currently not being used. And we do have a pretty decent vegetative screen between us and the neighboring parcel in the event that they ever do develop this. And as Jennifer spoke to, the project does still decrease the overall impervious area. The site as it is is at 59.1%. We are now at 57.5%. Our maximum lot coverage, which is 25% that's allowed, is now with this current analysis, 30.8%. And that's really primarily a result of this building being stepped back and trying to make up for that additional area that we lost and the inefficiencies associated with how the structure is going to be built as we step back from the third story to the fourth story. And also taking into account where these encroachments are going to take place, we tried to do them in a manner where it wouldn't necessarily be, as I said, visible from one observing this. So that's how we kind of ended up with the particular layout. We still are taking into account the fire access lanes, so we didn't necessarily have the ability to encroach further here, going to the south on the building. As I said, it would encroach within our minimum fire setback lane distance between here and here. We've also, based on our previous meeting we had with you, was we eliminated the access drive as it came out onto Route 9 here. The intent is we're going to utilize this area more for landscaping, so some of this area that was previous and previous is now being supplemented by the additional building square footage. It would be striped, which would be for, also for fire truck emergency access. And I believe as the renderings that were provided to you, we're taking advantage of this area and increasing the opportunity for further screening along the frontage of the site. So I'm going to let Jason now speak, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen as it relates to the inefficiencies with the step back and why we had to encroach in the rear yard.
Yes, hi, everyone. Thanks, thanks again for letting us present our concept here. The idea was just to listen to the comments, and what we had felt in the last meeting was the most important things were really the view from the, from Route 9 of South Road. And so we've stepped the building back, we've added landscaping, we've tried to, we've lowered the impervious surface. That seemed to be a hot button as well. But as Chris mentioned, it forced us to go into the setback back there. And from a, from a building perspective, when you build a fourth floor smaller, you lose efficiency on that fault, that floor. So it does, maybe you lose 10,000 square feet on the gross square feet, but on the actual rentable square feet, you lose a lot more, because instead of being a 75% efficiency, you have more like a 55% efficiency. So that floor is mostly elevator banks, stairwell, not mostly, but a lot of elevator banks, stairway, and hallways. So it's become a much, much less efficient floor, so that's why we had to add to the back. And, I mean, I've got some numbers on it, but, you know, at the end of the day, basically, we lost 10% of the leasable square feet when we stepped it back, so that is made up on the back of the, on the back of the property. Again, I hope, I hope everyone understands that we try to listen to the comments of the board, which we're all, we take very seriously and take, you know, we want to do what the board wants us to do. So hopefully this, this arrangement works. Chris, do you want to show them one of the, the renderings to show them what this is going to look like?
All right. So bear with me. I'm gonna open them all up so I can just jump from one to the other.
The other thing we play with is unit mix, and it's very important to get the unit mix of the units, so 10 by 10s, 10 by 20s, 5 by 5s, that the community wants. And as you shrink the size of one of the floors, it, it changes that a bit. So this is all part of me explaining why we need that space in the back. So everyone can see the step back. Again, that's 35 feet. The other thing that's, we're doing is we're basically putting two roofs on the building. So instead of one, lots of whole building is two. But again, these are concessions we're certainly willing to do, and we think this is going to be a really pretty project. So this is from the south driving north. This is straight on, and if you look at the elevation of site, this is from a raised area. So this is if you were standing up high, let's call it above the Galleria Mall. So from the street where those cars are, we'll never see the fourth floor. We'll be driving by, at least from a straight-on angle, we'll be driving by a three-story building. And I think that was our intent, and I think that was the intent of the board as well.
And what I also like here, and it might be worth speaking to Jason, is how the architecture appears to show that this building steps from second floor to third floor to fourth floor, which I, I think really connects in terms of the synergies of the vertical elevations.
This is with vegetation we have that's in place and that we're planning to, to landscape. So that's coming from the north to the south, obviously, but, you know, there's quite a bit of screening there. And again, you can see how it's screened from the neighboring property to the north as well.
You can see we're, we're taking advantage here of that previous area that's being eliminated and populating it with some additional trees for screening. This is, I think, kind of the, this is the, Jason, this is the rendering that.
Yeah, this is with ghost trees. So this is, if those trees weren't there, what it would look like. Trees will be there, but if they weren't there for any reason, this is actually what the building looks like from the north driving to the south. And that, and I, and I think that's it for my, my piece. If anyone has any questions about the actual build and the efficiency, I'm more than happy to talk through that in more detail. But if not, I'll turn it over to Jennifer, to Chris. I'll turn it back to Chris.
Yeah, Jason, you know, one of the things I just want to clarify, and, and, you know, this is going back to, we had a call of yourself, Aaron, and Jennifer, and when you guys took a look at the step-back building on 88,000, you actually came up with a slightly higher percentage than that 10%. 10,000 was the square footage that you guys were actually using. That's roughly maybe 12% or so?
Right. I'm sorry, I was, I was looking at the gross, and then that, the efficiency on that, it, it's significant in our, in our order. It's, so if it's 10% of the actual space is gone, then what you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so the, the numbers came out to like 11 and change, so based on how we were just squaring this off, we ended up with adding 12,000 square feet to the 88 in order to get you back to your original number that we had, if it was all four stories, is, is how this was.
So original net rentable number? That's what we.
Yeah, we, we went to the original, correct, net rentable number. And the 10% would be the 10% of what your current square footage is, but not necessarily what we previously had.
Correct.
I want to clarify.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
I don't want the board to think that, gee, they're adding all this square footage. No, we're just trying to mimic the net rentable area with this layout.
For what it's worth, it's still about 10% smaller than the property, I think, maybe 15% smaller than the extra space up the road a bit. So we're, we're still certainly within the standards of the, of the immediate area there.
So I'm sharing my screen, and, and, you know, I guess we can, with that, we don't have anything else to add on our part. Thank you for your input and giving us the time, and now we'd like to turn it back over to the board.
Okay. Well, I think from my point of view, I think you've addressed the current concerns that we had, unless anybody else has anything?
I think it looks great.
I think it looks very nice.
Agreed.
Amy, anybody else on the board? Lisa, I have a question, though. Do we have to re-contact the county for the changes in the additional variances?
So we'll have to re-notice a public hearing when that happens. What may make the most sense is once the board provides feedback tonight to let this proceed through the planning board a little bit more, because they may have some landscaping or design tweaks that they want to make. But, so what the board's looking for tonight is just feedback on the general concept, and then they'll come back to us with a formal, an amended application that includes the new variances that they need and any changes that the planning board's put into place. And at that point, we will send it to county again.
Okay. Well, from my point of view, I think they've addressed all the concerns that I had, and I'm, I'm not hearing anything else.
I think, again, I think they did exactly what we asked.
I agree.
Quick procedural question for Lisa. The public hearing was adjourned to next month. I mean, should we, next, you know, should we?
It doesn't really matter, because we're going to have to re-notice it.
Right.
So next month, we can either adjourn it, you know, officially if they're not ready to come back, or, and, but we'll still, there will be another public hearing notice, so it doesn't really matter whether we end that public hearing and start with a new public hearing or keep going. I don't know, Jennifer, if you have a preference, one way or the other.
Yeah, I think, you know, as we get close to the submission deadline for that March meeting, we'll be able to let you know, Lisa, whether we'll be able to submit our amended application and re-notice for that meeting or not. But we'll certainly keep in touch with, with your, with your attorney, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your time and your comments. It's very much appreciated.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item number three. This is Violet Estates, 35 Violet Avenue. Is there anyone to hear from that application?
Going a little old school tonight. I'm Kelly Leibl with KRC Planning.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Kelly Leibl.
Kelly, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right. Why don't you describe what you want to do?
Um, we have, let's see, I think Amy's going to put the presentation up on the screen also, if you want to look at it either way. So I represent the Reynolds Group, and they own the property. I think many of you, I've been before this town for many years for this particular project.
Does that microphone work?
I don't think so.
Should be. It's, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yep. Lean forward. I've been before the town for many years for this project. It was formerly known as the Dahlia Project, which is a 55 and older. This is a seven-acre parcel on 9G Violet Estates or Violet Avenue. And the property is in the RM zoning district, and it did receive the SHAD approval, which was the senior housing overlay district approval. And it was approved for six buildings, mostly residential, and there's a small component of it that's non-residential in the front. It's really commercial, but we call it non-residential. The property is in the RM zoning district, and as indicated, it's predominantly adjacent to residential properties in the back, but along 9G Violet Avenue, it is in the IH district and the BN district. Most of the properties are in the IH and the BN district. I tried to provide you with a snapshot of what the roadway looks like in this area, and so it is predominantly commercial. I would say it's industrial and commercial with a variety of different signage on 9G. I think as this property begins, you know, this area begins to be more developed, we've seen kind of a splatter of some projects here and there. Perhaps the signage might get a little bit more organized, but for now, you see a variety of different signs. And I did list some of the uses in the area, which are really commercial and industrial. So there's graystone programs, RV rental, auto sales, Fairview Heartside, which is fireplaces, there's an industrial park, and some auto repair. The one, the photo on the bottom right is, the former site is up in the upper left-hand corner, which is the old house that was sitting on, on the subject property. And so the, the photo that you see in the lower right is actually the ice cream building that is adjacent to the subject property that we're here tonight for. So we're here tonight to request an area variance for the size of the monument sign. And I incorrectly put on the application that the size of the sign permitted is four square feet, but it's actually larger, so thank you, Mr. Walti, for correcting that. The actual permitted sign in that area, because of the SHAD, is 12 square feet for the monument sign, and we are seeking permission for a sign that's 24.66 square feet. We did provide you with the complete application, the seeker documentation, and the, I'll call it the argument or the justification, addressing the five threshold test criteria for the issuance of an area variance. We were, thought it was advisable to provide you with a sample of what the signage would look like if we were as of right and what we're proposing. We did provide the side-by-side on this, it's on the screen, so that you can see it. Just for perspective, a size of a sheet of plywood is, you know, four by eight, just 32 square feet, and we're asking for a 24-square-foot monument sign there. So I think, given the speed of the road and so forth, it's a reasonable request. This is a new facility. We want to make sure that it's well available and known to the people that are going up and down 9G, and I think it's been very tastefully done. I can go through the threshold criteria if you'd like me to, but you do have that in your evidence.
Nope, that's fine. Tell me, are you going to locate it about where the sign, the temporary sign is now?
Yes.
Okay. Will it be lit?
It is. It's downlit, so it complies with the town's night sky compliant lighting.
Okay. And the measurement of the sign is just actually the, what would be the square of the black part of the sign?
Is that how you consider it?
Not including that brick facade decorative thing, whatever that is?
Correct.
I don't have any questions. Christine?
No, no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Amy, would you mind stop sharing the screen for just a minute? Makes it easier to see if anyone's trying to unmute. Thank you. Not seeing anyone with a raised hand. Not seeing anyone trying to unmute her, waving frantically.
Okay. In that case, I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right. That brings us to item number four. This is Christopher Patoro, 53 Carreto Lane. Is someone here from that application?
I am. I think someone else in the court is. It's Kristen. It's my wife. I'm Jeremy.
I don't see anybody that looks like a Kristen.
Uh, hold on, I'm sorry. I had a phone call coming. Okay, I'm, I am here.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Say it again? I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry. Yes.
All right. Why don't you describe your application?
Uh, we just, uh, asking for the deck that was on there previously to be put back on. It was, it was an enclosed, let me actually clarify a little bit. It was an enclosed deck that was heated and all of that, and it came down from water damage before us, and then they fixed it up and made it look nice, and they did not put the deck back on. So now they want to put the deck on, not an enclosure, just a regular deck, same size, same everything.
All right. And from the, the drawing that you submitted, it's in line with the side of the house? Is that correct?
Not the side of the house, the back of the house.
Well, the, the deck goes along, the deck, does the deck extend any farther to the side lot than the side of the house?
It's a, it's a 10 by 10 deck, just from the, it's the left, I mean, if you're facing the back of the house, if you look at it from the back, it's the, it would be the right side, and it's a 10 by 10 off the side of the deck, and off the side of the house right there. Is that what you mean?
Does it follow the line of the house, or does it stick out any farther towards your, towards your neighbor, towards a neighbor than the house?
I honestly don't understand the question. You mean, what side of the house? You mean the side of the house or the back? Which side do you mean?
The side. You're looking for a side lot variance, so there's an encroach upon the side lot, anything more than the house does?
This is a, this is a deck that was there before, though. It was, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking.
So if you, if you, you're building out the back, the deck from the back of the house, right? The side of the house comes along this, this property line. It's 12 feet away from the property line, the side of the houses. Will the deck be the same distance from that side property line as the house is, or is it going to be any closer to the side property line in the house?
It won't be any closer. It would be what it was before.
Which is, does it extend straight back, basically, from the side of the house?
Yeah, it extends straight back, yeah, from the, from the back of the house, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't go out to the left. It's a, it doesn't wrap around or anything like that. It's just a 10 by 10 deck that goes straight back, yep, from the back of the house, yeah.
Okay. I don't have any further.
My apologies. I'm sorry. I'm not, it was a little confusing with sides, with side, back, front, yeah. Okay. Sorry.
Christine, you have any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
G? No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on, on this?
You're on the Zoom. You can just unmute yourself. Raise your hand if you want on the Zoom.
All right. I don't see or hear anyone, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay. And I'm sorry, you can either wait for the end of the meeting when we deliberate and decide, or you can contact the zoning administrator in the morning.
Okay. How long is the meeting? How much longer is the meeting? Sorry.
It will be one hour and eight minutes.
Don't believe them.
Don't believe them.
That's optimal.
And I'm not familiar with the process, so I'm going, I'm going to wait to ask someone to, to get confirmation.
All right, so you can either wait, I can't tell you how long it's going to be until we deliberate, but, or you can just call the zoning administrator in the morning.
And just tell them that it's been approved, right? Is that what I'm saying?
It will say if it's been approved, yes.
Okay, I understand now. Okay. Thank you. I hope that was just, okay, sounds good.
All right. All right, that brings us to item five. Pasquale Gasparini, 286 Spackenkill Road. Is there someone here for that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Alan Rapier. I'm the attorney for the Gasparinis. And Susan and Pasquale are sitting to my right.
How do you do?
I'm well. How are you?
How are you?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
We're applying for a special use permit for, to have a salon at our home.
Okay. And so why don't you tell us a little bit about the business?
So we have a small salon that we put in our garage. We have two hair stations and one nail station. I don't know. What else?
Sue, what about your hours?
Okay. So we're open Tuesday through Saturday. Well, the earliest we would open would be 9:00 AM. And the latest, we have two days a week that we're open till 9:00. And other than that, we're open till 3:00 or 7:00.
And you are aware that one of the special permitting requirements is that you can't operate past 7:00 PM, correct?
Oh, we are.
Okay. And what about parking? Where do your customers park?
We have parking in our driveway.
And a customer comes in that isn't parked in the driveway, do you tell them to park into the driveway?
Yes, I tell them to park there.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right, and how many employees?
Sell their products out of the home?
We sell products to the clients that are there.
Okay, so someone comes in for a haircut, one of the things you'll offer is to give them, they want shampoo or gel, you will sell that to them?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, how many employees do you have?
We have, there's four in total.
All right. And so it's you and your husband?
Yes.
You both, you reside at that residence?
Yes.
And then you have two employees that don't reside there?
Yes.
Okay. And where do they park?
We will park, whoever's working at the time, we pull into the gate so that it leaves the driveway for just clients.
Okay.
So they park on your property?
Yes.
Yeah, we do. Just park on your property.
We have additional parking on our, our property for.
Inside the gate.
Okay. And some of us made a, a site visit there. And I thought you said that when you converted the garage, that, that all the permits were, that everything was done correctly?
That is correct. Everything was done correctly.
So you have a, you have a building permit and a, an inspection, an electrical inspection and a plumbing inspection for that?
We're working on all that.
So Mr. Chairman, let me, let me step in if I could. They, they were not aware of the special permitting requirements. They did not get a special permit. And they are working on closing out any building code issues now with the town building department.
Yes.
All right. And can you describe where you are in that process?
Our electrical permit, I believe, is done. We're just waiting, I, I, we were told that we had to wait until after this meeting tonight for the rest of the permits to be completed.
Who did you talk to? So?
The building department.
Is there a person there that you've been communicating with?
In contact with Christine zoning and.
The building department.
And Mr. Flowers.
Mr. Flowers.
Okay.
The building department waited, wanted to wait until they got their approvals before they, you know, did their inspection.
Yes.
Because, you know, if they didn't get their approvals, then they would have to take everything out anyway.
Okay. And there's also, what else goes on? Does anything else go on, on the property other than the, than the salon?
No, no.
It's been, Mr. Chairman, there apparently is a concern by a neighbor who may believe that they're running a business. They have a, a travel trailer on their property where their daughter, from time to time, will watch a movie in and where Sue will knit with her friends. There's no one living in it and there's no business being conducted on their property other than what we've already described. So I think it's been uttered that someone thinks there is, but that's, it's not accurate.
Okay. And tell me this, how many clients do you see at a time? You said you had two hair chairs and a one nail station?
Yeah, but we literally typically have, we try to have, we broke up the time so that we really only have like two stylists working at a time.
Which means how many customers?
So there would only be two customers being worked on at a time. And the days vary because the hours vary. So, I mean, that's hard to say how many we would do in a day. I mean, maybe at the most 10, if it, if it was a longer day.
That's on a 10 to 12 hour, 10-hour day?
Yeah, that's on a longer day.
But there's no more than two people, customers there at a single time is, is the question you're asking?
Yes, no more than two customers at a time.
Okay. And so I, I understand, you got to notice a violation and that's what you brought you here? That's what brought you here? Is that correct?
Yes. We didn't realize, yes. We didn't realize we needed the special use permit.
That's where, that's how you got there.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And, and let me ask you this, if you want to speak with your attorney first about it, but is the business still proceeding? If you want to speak with your attorney about that, that's, you want to mute yourself and speak with your attorney?
Just for a second, please, but I mean, we did talk about it earlier.
Okay.
What he, what he wants to know is are you doing business?
Why don't you mute, why don't you mute yourself? Sorry, I don't want to.
You have to answer the question honestly. Has it completely stopped?
Should I have done that?
What's that?
Should I have muted them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to listen to that. You guys want to unmute yourself whenever you're ready to, to, oh, you're ready? All right. Maybe I can help you out with that. Let's see. I can ask you to unmute, and you got to do the unmuting yourself, I think.
All right, now you.
All right, I, I muted something else by mistake. The bottom line is that they have not completely stopped. They have had customers that had appointments that they didn't cancel. But it has definitely slowed down.
Okay.
It's not, they have to be truthful. You swore to tell me.
Okay. So you can advise them as you like, but I, I think they have to stop until everything's resolved, but.
I understand that. We, we talked about that today.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. Christine?
I think that covers it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Art?
Between the visits and there's statements tonight, I think I'm good. Thank you.
All right. And I'm sorry, I do have another question. You do sell products, but realistically, what's the percentage of your business that deals with the sale of the products that you use in, in the course of a business?
Minimal. That's minimal. We don't sell much product at all.
Can you say, Sue, 5% or less?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Okay. Well then, 5% or less is the answer.
Okay, thank you. Tony?
I have no questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Larry?
Yeah, I'm accused of this.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, Phyllis?
Hi, no questions.
And Tony S.?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, why don't you come on, step up? You can sit at the, at the microphone. State your name.
My name's John Boris, 284 Spackenkill Road.
John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right. What, what do you have to say about this application?
All right, this whole thing is a joke. Shouldn't be here at all. They totally are frauding the town of Poughkeepsie. So first off, the garage that was there was a finished garage that was reported to the town of Poughkeepsie Building Department and Zoning Department 12 years ago. They did nothing. I went into the town of Poughkeepsie Building Department to request the FOIL report on the property. I was denied. Okay? While I was in there doing that, one of the building inspectors threatened me in the building department. This is 10 or 12 years ago. I should have went right to Tim Sickles, but I didn't. I just gave up. Because there was, anything this man does, he has so many open violations in that house that the town has done nothing about. Okay, the parking, it's horrendous. They only have two customers a day. I'm pretty sure you guys have all seen pictures of his driveway with four, five, six cars in it? Okay, I lived near. I walked out the other day to go to the mailbox. I'm just walking there. There's four or five cars in the driveway. One pulls in, a white, a woman with blonde hair comes out. First time I ever seen anybody with a mask on telling them something. I don't know what they're telling them. The woman has to back out onto Spackenkill Road. Spackenkill Road in that area is the most dangerous driveway to be backing in or pulling out of because right across the street is a development. 200 feet up the road is Alder Drive. Tonight, when I was coming here, I had to wait almost 10 minutes just to get out of Alder Drive. Now, everything they're saying is a lie. The garage, let's get back to that, was fully renovated as a living space. Town never did nothing about it. The front garage door was fake. Town never did nothing. Zoning never did nothing. So I just let it go after the building inspector because I build. And he said to me, in his own words, "You better never get me as a building inspector." And I said, "Is that a threat?" He said, "You take it as you may." I should have went right into Tim Sickles. He knows me very well from the town. I've been working here 40 years. So, he wants to build, he pulls this permit to add on to the garage. Okay, the plans for that permit to add on to the garage, I did get a FOIL report, are an absolute joke. A three-year-old could have wrote them. I had had bigger plans to build a deck than it was to build that addition on the back. And I got to say, the initials of BMF, I can only say one thing and I won't say it, who approved that permit? Now he's got a ton of other problems there that the town has never done nothing about. Open building violations, they never did nothing about. Now he's trying to apply, apply for this thing. It's been open over a year. Now they do, they did have a great big nice salon in Wapageers that, I don't know what the purpose was, it closed. They're going to complain COVID, but they have two brand-new cars, brand-new camper. They pay to have their lawn done.
I'm going to ask you to kind of limit your comments to the special use permit and the criterion that we use to approve or deny it. So many of the things that you have to talk about don't really have anything to do with the business. So describing how many cars are there, that, I think that's important.
All right, all day long, it could be hit or miss. One, two, three, four, five. We got to hear the doors shut, the beeping, the unbeeping of the locks. At nighttime, his diagram is not true. The way they got to do 30-point turns unless they back out onto the, onto Spackenkill.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. Do you see traffic there after 7:00 PM or before 9:00 AM?
Their house, not before 9:00, but they've had cars in that driveway at 10, 11 o'clock at night.
All right. And any idea whether those are customers or just?
They're customers because the lights are on in the salon. And I'm going to make sure that this isn't, I don't even know how they can have an electrical permit. They can't. They have to gut the whole entire thing. It's a fully finished salon with no permits. None, zero.
Okay. Again, I'm going to try and redirect you to the part about the business. So if you have any other comments about that, that might be helpful.
It shouldn't be there. And how are they even open? The last year, they've been open and the zoning and the building department did nothing.
Well, that's, that's why we're here. So your, any of your comments about the traffic or any impact?
The traffic.
Okay. So you described the number of cars in the driveway and how frequently they're, they're there?
Yeah, it could be like now, there could be none. In an hour, there could be five. And the parking there, the way he has it drawn, there's no possible way they're turning around in there. And this has been reported to three different agencies outside the town of Poughkeepsie. Because I don't know how he's getting away with all of this with the zoning and the building department. But Tim Sickles is way aware of this. And if they have any kind of an electrical permit right now, there's no possible way. The whole structure is illegal from the dirt up.
Once again, I'm going to try and limit your content, your comments about the business.
All right.
Okay? So if you have any other comments about that, that's fine. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay, ahead.
How many cars you have in your driveway?
Two.
No, you have more than that. You got a business truck and a trailer.
There's three cars.
And a trailer?
Yeah.
Okay. And they have three or four cars in their driveway, so.
And three in the backyard.
Okay. And it, it would almost appear that all the, the firewood, et cetera, the business sign in front of your house, that.
There is none.
There was?
Yeah. Let's keep going. Beat on me. We're going to see what happens.
You know what? I'm done. I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Christine, anything?
No questions.
Tony?
I have no questions.
All right. Anybody else from the board?
No questions.
We should see if there's anyone else from the public who wants to speak.
Well, I, yeah, I got to see if the applicants want to comment about any of those.
I would like to be heard.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Just a few very brief points. Number one, there has never been an accident associated with the Gasparini's property in the 17 years they've been there. So these concerns about traffic and backing up and all that stuff are unfounded. Number two, to the degree that the building department has identified issues that need to be addressed, they either have been or will be addressed as part of this process. These other unrelated matters, apparently this gentleman has reported them to multiple different agencies, if you will. As things come up, we'll address them, but we're certainly not here to trade neighborly distaste with one another.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, and as of this week, I talked to Tim Sickles and there is nothing being addressed about that garage.
Okay, but, but once again, we're here about the business.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anyone else from the community who wishes to comment on this application?
If you're on the Zoom, which you must be because there's no one else in the room, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself. Not seeing any.
And Mr. Chair, you may want to note for the record that we did receive some written comments about this application.
That's right. And so that will be made part of the record. There are a number of, there are a number of letters and comments which were directed to the board and those will be made part of the permanent record. Thank you. All right. I'm not hearing anything else, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 And once again, you can wait until the end of deliberations or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
That brings us to item six, McDonald's Corporation, 2585 South Road. Is there someone here for that application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Keith Brown.
Mr. Brown, do you swear or?
Can you unmute?
Yes. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I'm going to turn you down.
That's, okay. All right, why don't you describe the application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The applicant, Keith Brown, from Wolfman, Orlando, in Del Rio. 538 Broad Hall Road, Suite 301 West, Melville, New York, 11747. I'm here this evening for McDonald's application for parking and sign variance.
for parking and sign variance and for impervious surface variance to develop McDonald's restaurant with a side-by-side drive-through as a paired site in the Hudson Plaza Shopping Center located at twenty-five eighty-five South Road in Poughkeepsie. As part of the application, the applicant submitted the following documents in support of requested variance relief. A memorandum of support prepared by Brown Old and Delio and a traffic report prepared by Atlantic Traffic Design. Now, we'll speak tonight of the following experts who are there with to answer any questions. Mr. Rob Stricker from Bowler Engineering, the project civil engineer, Ethan Chikoski of Atlantic Traffic Design, the traffic engineer, Mr. Patrick Police from Core States Group, the project architect, and William Weiss-Gerber of McDonald's Corporation, the applicant's representative. Just a little bit of background. The applicant is seeking to develop a vacant portion of the Hudson Plaza Shopping Center with a three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight forty-four square foot, sorry, forty-four-seat McDonald's restaurant with side-by-side drive-through. Hudson Plaza is approximately twenty-six point five-two-seven acres in size and is located on the west side of US nine, otherwise known as South Road, between River Crest Court and Hudson Harbor Drive. The shopping center is improved with a mix of retail uses and is anchored by a Price Chopper supermarket. McDonald's will be leasing approximately one point four-seven-eight acres of the shopping center that is located along US Route nine. The lease area is currently paved and used as a parking field. We note that McDonald's has a pending cycling application before the town planning board, and on January twentieth of this year, the planning board, as lead agency under secret, determined that the development of the McDonald's restaurant would not have a significant environmental impact. The applicant is next scheduled to appeal before the planning board on March seventeenth of this year. The purpose of this application is to request the following relief to develop the McDonald's restaurant. One, a variance will allow nine hundred and twenty-nine parking stalls at the shopping center. The town code section two-ten dash ninety-two subsections O requires one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine stalls. Second, a variance from town code section two-ten dash one-five-two sub-A five-A to allow parking to be situated thirty feet from Route nine where a one-hundred-foot setback is required. Three, permission to add a third freestanding sign to the shopping center where town code section two-ten one-twenty-eight subsection B permits one freestanding sign. Four, relief to allow McDonald's restaurant to have six wall signs where town code section two-ten dash one-two-eight subsection C three A permits a maximum of one wall sign per store. And finally, five, a variance from town code section two-ten dash three-six sub-E to allow a shopping center to have an impervious surface of ninety-two point six percent or seventy-five percent to permit. As will, as will be further explained in the applicant's memorandum of support, the benefit to the applicant in granting the area variance relief of the project outweighs any possible detriment to the public safety and, and/or welfare. With respect to the character of the neighborhood, as some of the board members may be aware, the area surrounding the Route nine is commercial in nature. East of the property, across Route nine, is Post Road Plaza, a commercial shopping center that includes a shop, a Stop &amp; Shop supermarket, a Barnes &amp; Noble. Also across Route nine is a Wendy's restaurant with a drive-through, TGI Friday's restaurant, and a Dunkin' Donuts. To the north of McDonald's lease area is part of Hudson Plaza, which includes a vacant building and additional parking fields. Further north is a mobile gas station with accessory convenience store. To the south of McDonald's lease area is additional parking fields for the Hudson Plaza Shopping Center, and further is an urgent care facility and a gasoline station. And to the west of McDonald's lease area is additional Hudson Plaza parking fields and Hudson Plaza tenant space. Further west is a landscape buffer that separates Hudson Plaza from Hudson Harbor Apartments. We note that many of the commercial properties in the area maintain parking in the front yard along Route nine. For example, the Dunkin' Donuts, US Postal Service, and Christ Diagnostics Lab all have parking in the front yard. We submit that granting the application to develop a McDonald's restaurant is perfectly consistent with the commercial character of the surrounding area and will not cause a detriment to nearby properties. Next, it's not feasible for the applicant to develop the lease area with McDonald's restaurant and drive-through without area variance relief. We note that the shopping center already maintains a parking deficit with the current one thousand thirty-six stalls, and it's not possible for the applicant to develop the lease area without requiring additional parking variance relief. In addition, the shopping center has existing impervious surface area of ninety-three point five percent where seventy-five percent is required. As such, it's not feasible for the applicant to achieve the benefit of the McDonald's restaurant without variance relief. However, we note that although an impervious surface area variance is required, this project will reduce the overall impervious surface area of the shopping center. The shopping center's impervious surface will be reduced from ninety-three point five percent to nearly ninety-two point six percent or a difference of approximately one percent. In addition, the impervious surface of McDonald's lease area will be reduced from ninety point nine percent to sixty-four point eight-six percent. The applicant also seeks the benefit of a freestanding sign to safely advertise the new McDonald's restaurant to passersby traveling along Route nine's South Road. The front of the shopping center is landscaped and its tenants are not readily visible to motorists. Due to the landscaping that's currently in existence and the speed in which vehicles travel on Route nine, the McDonald's restaurant will not be readily visible to motorists until the motorists have already driven past Hudson Plaza's northerly entrance. With respect to the size of the variance, as previously noted, although the variance relief is requested for impervious, impervious surface, the project will be reducing the overall impervious surface area from ninety-three point five percent to ninety-two point six. We also note that the project area will be substantially reduced with impervious surface area of the lease area from ninety point nine to sixty-four point eight-six percent. And based on the traffic counts conducted at the shopping center, the applicant's request to permit nine hundred and twenty-nine parking stalls is not substantial. As will, will be more fully explained by our traffic engineer, Ethan Chikoski, the maximum peak demand at the shopping center with its current tenants at the McDonald's restaurant will be from eight hundred and three stalls. As such, the proposed nine hundred and twenty-nine stalls will leave the shopping center with a surplus of one hundred and twenty-six stalls. And finally, the property that is currently, is currently improved with the shopping center, and permitting the applicant to develop the existing paved area with the McDonald's restaurant will not have an adverse impact or effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or surrounding district. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we would like to open up the discussion and have the project engineer just go through and the various reasons that's being requested, and the traffic engineer, unless you wanna have the board just ask specific questions, we can take it however you want.
Now, why don't you describe the outline of the project, so we get a better understanding about the traffic flow and how it relates to Route nine and the neighboring properties.
Sure. If I could ask Rob Stricker to begin, and then Ethan, if you wanna just amplify anything that Rob says? Okay.
Excuse me, do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. I do as well.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't you, do you have a schematic or a blueprint that you can aid in describing the traffic flow?
No, no shares. No share the screen.
Yeah, let me share the screen. Okay. So this is a couple of the plans that were developed for this property. You can see Hudson Plaza Shopping Center located and outlined as the site. What's highlighted is the lease area, which is just a portion of that overall shopping center. And what is proposed is the development of the McDonald's restaurant within that lease area. You can see an existing egress driveway nearly to the south of the lease area. There is a driveway, or roadway rather, Harbor Drive, just beyond that further to the south as well.
Is that a public roadway?
Harbor Drive? I believe it is.
It's not.
Yes. So, the lot will have access within the shopping center. There's no direct access from McDonald's lease area out to South Road. The shopping center itself, further to north, has another driveway, it's a signalized driveway with two-way traffic flow. Internally on the site, so this plan is now oriented with north to the right. So the driveway we were discussing for the shopping center is located on the left-hand side of the page, south of the lease area. And this plan really just focuses on the McDonald's lease area. Just to the north is that vacant, it was former bank building. For connectivity, McDonald's is proposing two connections to a central drive aisle within the shopping center, and also an ingress-only maneuver from the lease pad, or I'm sorry, from the vacant bank pad, which is just to the north. Circulation through the site is in one-way direction in a counterclockwise maneuver around the property.
Where do you foresee the, most of the traffic coming from?
So, it'd be coming from, well, maybe I should let the traffic engineer address that. That would probably be more likely. Ethan, I'm, I, I can talk for a second, but, so, just a small correction to, to Rob. If, Rob, if you go back to that map just for a second. And zoom in, yep. That northern driveway is actually an egress-only signalized driveway, and the driveway near our site is an ingress-only signalized driveway for the shopping center. So, most traffic is gonna come in, you know, you can make a northbound left into the shopping center there, or southbound right. Most traffic's gonna enter through that signalized driveway or through Harbor Drive, Hudson Harbor Drive. There's also an inner connection with, with the gas station on the northeast corner of the site, so, you know, cars could enter from there, or, of course, there's gonna be cross-traffic with people already going to the shopping center who, you know, wanna stop at McDonald's on their way in or way out, so.
Okay.
And if you go to the site plan. So, it, it just, we wanted to note that Rob didn't have as much as, it would be one-way, counterclockwise circulation. It, it flows in the same direction and, and helps, the, the flow of the site with, with the drive-through, which is a double drive-through, dislocation on side-by-side, as we call it. That side-by-side drive-through operates a little bit more efficiently than, you know, traditional single-lane drive-through by allowing two orders to be placed at, at the same time. So, you know, when you get a more complicated order, you know, they can, they can queue up on, on one of the two order points and, and allow the other lane to, to circuit the drive-through, and that just helps the drive-through flow, which is important these days, given the onset of COVID and, and how popular drive-through demand is.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions regarding the traffic flow?
Isn't Hudson Harbor Drive a private road?
It is.
Does that make any difference to us? Okay.
All right. Okay. Then I think, is there someone that could talk about the signs?
Sure. Rob, you wanna just go through the elevations, or, or Patrick, who's better off giving it?
The architectural elevations, I have them available if Patrick wants to speak to them, or I can speak to them.
Go ahead, Bob. It might be, just be easier.
All right, so this is the sign package that is proposed. What faces, what faces Route nine is identified as a non-drive-through side elevation. So, what's proposed is a McDonald's logo and McDonald's word mark. Front elevation is the south side of the building, again with the logo and word mark. The drive-through side elevation that faces into the shopping center, you see, all that's proposed is the McDonald's wing and rear elevation that faces north and that has the logo proposed. Now, altogether, well, each arch is fourteen square feet in size. So each one of the McDonald's arches is fourteen square feet. The lettering for McDonald's is thirty-two point eight-three square feet. So, the ordinance permits one sign per store, obviously six are being proposed by the applicant. There's also a limitation of a hundred square feet for a max sign area, and these signs are all below that. So the, the question is the number of signs.
So we, we actually submitted pursuant to town code, three proposed elevations. The first one was the six-sign one, which Rob has before you. And we also submitted a four-sign elevation, which differs slightly in that we remove the word mark from a non-drive-through side.
Yes, that's this one, Keith.
Right. And then, one, two, three, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five. Oh, and we also removed the, the word mark where it says McDonald's from the drive-through side elevation. And then finally, we submitted another version, which showed one sign, which has just the, the arch logo on the tower design feature on the front elevation. So our, our preference would be that, you know, if the board was, was to grant the variance, we'd certainly be amenable to reducing it down to the four sign design that we submitted. This way, we have sufficient customer notification. On the front elevation, if Rob, if you could pull that one up, the four-sign one, where it says McDonald's word mark, and then the golden arch on the tower feature. And then on the non-drive-through side, it also has the golden arch on the tower feature. And on the rear elevation, which, which actually is the, we would capture motorists headed southbound on South Road. So, the object is to, is to capture the motorists who are on South Road, so this way they could see the sign, identify the McDonald's restaurant, you know, put their direction on, and slow down in order to make a turn into the shopping plaza.
You know what would be helpful for me, and if you're able to provide it, I, of course, you may not be able to do it tonight, but I'd like to see depictions of each of the signs from Route nine. Do you understand what I mean?
Yeah, I, we did do a 3D rendering. I don't know if Rob has that available, or if someone could pull that up.
I do not have that readily available. Someone else has it, they can pull it up, or it can dig while we talk.
Patrick Police, do you have that that you could share with the board?
I don't, I don't know that I do, but I will look. I'll look and see if I can find it. I, I actually went and looked for that in the, my email distributions and did not find it there.
While he's doing that, may I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Okay. These renderings, so if I'm coming south on Route nine, which am I going to see first? What's gonna be, what's facing the north side? I'm a little confused on this.
The rear elevation, the upper right-hand side that Rob is circling with his cursor.
Okay, face north. And then when I'm in front of, are we looking, that's a front-end elevation or the non-drive-through or the?
The non-drive-through sign, where the cursor is now.
So this is gonna be right along Route nine, that's what we're gonna see, facing Route nine. Okay.
Correct.
And the front elevation is one facing Price Chopper or Hudson Harbor?
Hudson Harbor. That's the upper-left one.
Yep, okay.
We spent a great deal of time with the planning department and planning board discussing the, the orientation of the building relative to the shopping center. And the way, the outcome was that this way provided the least amount of variance as possible and most maneuverability for motorists. and most maneuverability for motorists on site.
Thank you.
Christine, did you have any questions about the signs?
Can you just repeat, do you mind where it says rear elevation, where does that face?
The rear elevation is if you're headed southbound on South Road, we'll see that first.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Tony, any questions?
Yeah, will there be any signage in the existing plaza? Because there's 32 monument signs, one in the north and one in the south, would there be any signage in those?
We did propose a monument sign. Rob, if you could go to the site plan and show that. In the landscape area between the sidewalk and the parking lot, we propose a modest monument sign. Right there, yeah.
My question is, there's already two signs for the plaza. Would you include McDonald's logos in those?
We would leave it up to the board, you know, we did discuss at length putting new signage in the marquee signs. It's really up to your preference. You know, we're okay with one or the other, either adding a panel to both marquee signs or having a monument sign.
So that's available to you to utilize that?
Yes, we confirm that.
Good.
Okay. Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Can we?
But I would say this, if we were to do that, to just do the marquee signs, then we would really like to get the four-sign package that we, that I just discussed and went over.
I have another question.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear.
We've got somebody in the background there. I've got another question. May I ask another question, please?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, your impervious coverage, how are you going to reduce the coverage if it's all going to be blacktopped? Are you going to dig some of the blacktop up and put lanterns in? There, I got the answer.
Rob, you want to answer that?
Yeah, no, we're proposing to remove asphalt, we're increasing the landscape area. Right now, if you look along the South Road French, we're providing a 30-foot buffer to the right-of-way. Right now, there's parking within six feet of that right-of-way line. So within the lease area, it's a reduction of 26% of the impervious amount within lease area. So locally, it is a pretty significant reduction. We're introducing a lot of green space around the perimeter of the lease area.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Diane, did you have any questions?
No, no questions.
All right, Larry?
No questions.
All right, Phyllis?
I love you.
Phyllis, are you there?
I'm sorry, are there going to be directional signs as well within this project?
Yes, there are. There's directional signs that be egress and egress points within the shopping center and also providing directions around the facility itself.
And those are, you're not going to need additional sizes for them, those will meet the zoning standards?
Yes.
Could you just, so I'm familiar with the entrance into the complex. It's got the traffic lights on it. At that point, once you're in, there'll be directional signs rooting people counterclockwise around McDonald's, is that right?
Um.
How will you?
All right, I'm sorry.
How will you manage who's going to McDonald's as opposed to who's just going down the Price Chopper?
Well, as you enter the shopping center, the McDonald's will be on your right-hand side. You know, there are a few street trees along, you know, the site access road, but you'd be able to see the McDonald's as you enter and even as you.
Will it be on the right or the left?
It'll be on the right. So if you enter that signalized drive-through or driveway, I'm sorry, on the south side of the lot area, you know, you'll see the McDonald's on your right-hand side looking north. So as you enter, that McDonald's is going to be right there, it's going to be hard to miss.
I don't mean to be confusing, I was referencing the other entrance into the plaza.
On the north side.
The north side of the McDonald's.
Yes, so you enter from the southbound, South Road and you would have to just drive down the main center drive aisle to get down to the McDonald's. I don't believe we're proposing any additional guide signage in that area. But if we were able to have a sign on the marquee sign, which there's a marquee on that northern entrance, you know, you'd be aware that there's McDonald's in the shopping center.
Okay, so. That's fine, that's fine, thank you.
All right, Tony, asked, did you have any questions?
So in the interim, I just forwarded to Rob Strucker the 3D renderings. Rob, if you want to pull them up for the board to look at. Did they come through?
No, not yet.
Okay, it might take a few minutes.
In the meantime, Tony asked, did you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't have any yet.
All right, and Simona, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Keith, I don't have any attachments on the email that you forwarded me.
They, um, who is this, Ethan?
Yeah, send it to me, I can bring him up.
Yeah, I do want to mention that, and I think you were alerted to this, that the county recommendation has, did not come back yet on this application, so we will not be able to vote on it tonight. So we will be, you know, adjourning to next month. So there will be other opportunity, if we have additional questions or something like that, to get some responses for next month.
Yes. Yeah, the board council informed us earlier today.
And the next ZDA meeting does precede the next planning board meeting, which is the next time you're at the meeting. So we'll be able to, you may have a decision from the board prior to the, when you next review of the planning board.
There you go, Ethan just shared those 3D images. So the one was actually taken back from South Road. You can see there's a lot of vegetation, so what we did was we prepared a second one, so you're standing on the inside of the landscaped area. So you're looking in a northwest direction, correct, guys? Northwest? Yes, you're looking north-west, you're in the southeast corner of the site. Yep. So actually I can, let's do this. It's basically, if I can see that. Yeah. Looking in that direction.
Yes, I think probably people can figure it out once they're inside the plaza. I'm more interested in seeing what it looks like going down Route 9. So that's one picture.
Yeah, so these two rungs, this is going, well, in the southbound lane, but facing north, looking at the shopping center and then.
Right. So what I'd like to see, and anyone else can add whatever they like, but I'd like to see what you would see going down Route 9 with the screening that you, or landscaping that you propose. Are you able to do that, do you think?
Was that the image? That was the image that you had up just a moment ago, right?
Well, that's one. I'd like to see all the way from the northern part of the plaza all the way down.
What we were showing here, and I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, the board members asking for is sort of this direction from south, this is southbound Route 9.
Yeah, yeah, what people are going to see as they're trying to find the place.
And on the image that you showed without the trees, are those four signs part of the four-sign package? Or are some of those proposed to be eliminated as part of your four-sign package?
Yeah, that is the six-sign package that you're looking at. Because there's additional, that doesn't afford, but then in addition, there would be a arch logo on that southbound side where the cursor is over there. And on the backside, the drive-through side, which faces Price Chopper, there'd be one more additional.
Right, so what's proposed as part of the four-sign package, what of these four signs is being removed?
The word mark that says McDonald's right there, where Ethan's showing on his cursor.
Okay.
And then the word mark on the backside facing Price Chopper. So we would just have the word mark on the left on the front facade. The golden arch logo on the tower on the front facade. The golden arch on the non-drive-through side, which faces South Road. And finally, a golden arch as you head southbound. So one, two, three, four. That would be the preferred sign package. Yeah, I was correcting my markup here, right, that word sign.
Looking at that picture, where's the entrance if you want to go inside McDonald's?
Right there.
Okay.
Yep, that would be the word mark.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so you think you're clear about what I'm looking for?
Patrick, is that, was I going to give you enough time to get that done?
Can you clarify, just to be certain, you're looking for that additional view from the other direction on Route 9?
I'd like to see a couple images driving south on Route 9 or north, whichever way, but in between Hudson Harbor Drive and whatever the northernmost entrance is. So far past, not just the lot that you're leasing, but the entire plaza.
So a little further, so a little further north than the arrow is.
Right.
Maybe you want to see all the appeal because.
Right, yeah, well, people are going to pull in, yeah. I want to see what they're going to, how they're going to be able to negotiate and recognize the McDonald's.
Do you want to render into the monument sign?
Can we just go back, Ethan, to the elevation, it's one of the, there's a second entrance on the non-drive-through side, I just want to point out. Yeah, right, right where his cursor is showing right now. So it's two entrances.
Okay, so another question for you, I'm sorry, I apologize. Go back to what you just had up before, the Route 9 rendering that you just had prior to this. Nope, back, we had the, you know, when you're coming down.
The area on the left view.
There you go. Where on that, if you were going to put up a monument sign, where would you want that?
I'll just point, it basically would be right in this area here. It's proposed in the northeast corner of the lot.
So between somewhere around where the bank and McDonald's is going to be somewhere. And that would be a request for a true monument sign or a sign like across the street from Burlington? You're looking for something low and kind of sleek, right? Not your tall, typical tall McDonald's sign.
That's, all right, now, do you have the, yeah, if you're sharing, what's on the plans right now is a 20-foot-tall sign.
Why do you need it so high?
Trying to navigate around the trees, that was the intention.
But if you, if you look across the street and you look at Verizon, you know, they've got the monument sign. And that would still be below your tree line, your lower branches of the tree line are very visible.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we had already agreed to reduce it to a monument.
Would you, next time, would you add a rendering of that, please?
Sure.
So we have an idea of what we are actually going to end up looking at possibly?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything else?
Nothing else from me. Christine?
No.
Tony?
I just received a rendering of the sign. It would be a monument sign.
That's what the monument sign would look like?
Which one are we looking at? You have, you're throwing up a number of different things. It's this one?
Can you show the bottom of it? There you go. I'm sorry, you're looking for this one? Kia? Yes.
That's what you're going to propose?
Yes.
Okay, so the other one that was just the M on it was not a proposal? The previous one that you showed there? You had one with just a red M, a red background with a yellow M, that was the first one you threw up?
I'm going to ask Keith or Patrick to answer that question. I believe what he showed was the pile-on sign, I just saw it briefly myself.
Okay, so that was, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other board members have any other questions? All right, anyone for the public who wishes to comment on this application?
If you're on the Zoom, now's your time to unmute yourself, raise your hand. I think we're good.
All right, I'm not hearing anything, so I'll make a motion to adjourn this to the March 14th meeting. We're going to ask for those renderings. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? No? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thanks. Bye-bye.
All right, that brings us to item number seven. Anthony Road Associates, Route 9 Mazda, 2309 South Road. Is there someone here for that application?
This is Chris Lepine, right, Chris, is she there? Yeah, there you are.
I'm still here, yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Good evening. I'm sorry. Good evening, this is Chris Lepine, representing the applicant this evening.
Chris, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you briefly describe this application?
Okay, I'll be brief because I know it's been long. Anthony Road Associates LLC owns both parcels where Mazda is located and they join 12 acres. If you recall, the project that was before the board in 2019 as part of the overall Mazda upgrade project, Mazda received a meg-deck in September, the 19th, 2019. And in November 18th, 2019, Mazda received a variance from the town zoning board for all the items that are before you tonight. And they are related to the 40-foot minimum front yard setback along South Road and Anthony Drive for storage parking, display vehicles, building, employee and storage parking, and display vehicles also on Anthony Drive and Route 9. They also received a variance for vehicle storage buffer, which is a 40-foot front yard requirement. They received it for the storage parking, display parking, employee vehicles, and also display vehicles, once again, it's on two frontages. They also received a variance for the setback associated with the refuse and storage buffer from the RN of Zone District, if you recall. As part of the rezoning of the parcel, the town board set a rezoning line. the parcel, the town board, uh, set a rezoning line, uh, to the rear of the parcel, where we then rezoned 5.29 acres to the RN, and, uh, the setback from the refuse area is to the RN district on the property, not the neighboring property. The applicant went, uh, to obtain its building permit, uh, its site tags have all been signed, uh, as you can see, there has been some felling of the trees, we had our initial, uh, pre-construction meeting. It was flagged prior to the issuance of the building permit that their variances for the approved project had expired. Uh, what they're seeking, uh, this evening is an extension of those variances so that the building permit for the project can be issued and construction can commence.
Okay, any questions for any members of the board?
No questions. Technically, they're seeking no variances because they've already, the ones have expired, so they're not really seeking extensions, or they're seeking the same variances again. Sorry, Chris.
That's why Russell's in here, Tony, I'm an engineer.
And has anything significantly changed in, since your last app, application and approval?
No, it is still, it is still the same site plan, same variances that are being sought.
Okay, um, any questions from any members of the board?
I'm good.
Alright, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? I don't hear anything or see any, anything, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second? Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Aye.
Alright, that motion carries. Alright, that, that's the end of, uh, of this portion of the, of the meeting, so, does anyone need a break? Yeah, so I'll make a motion to adjourn for five minutes. Is there a second, Christine?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 We will reconvene in five minutes. Alright, okay, we're back in session, and? So items one and two were adjourned, so that brings us to item number three, 35 Violet Avenue, that's an unlisted action regarding a sign variance. Any, any comments about that?
No, it's a nice-looking sign.
Yeah, I think it's pretty consistent with, uh, the neighborhood, um, and the, what was allowed is probably inadequate.
Right. And should we maybe suggest that landscaping be provided around the base?
Yeah, so you have a staff report, right, for this one, um, and those, those were two conditions that, that I included, one was landscaping around the base, and then the other was, I, and I think the lighting does comply, but there weren't, there wasn't many details, so it is downlit, um, I, it does seem, that appears to be correct, but I just wanted to make sure that the lighting is, meets with code, and so that's something that Kristi can confirm when, when the time comes, but, um, but otherwise, yeah, that, you know, the only thing, she had, you know, originally had a four-foot, square foot sign is what she thought was the, what the code allowed, and so I had suggested to her to show us what a conforming sign at 12 square feet would look like, so that's what you saw tonight, and then I guess it's really up to you whether you think 12 square feet or 24 is better. Oh, and the county did weigh in on this one, they gave us a matter of local concern.
Okay. So, any other board members have any concerns that are on Zoom?
I have no concerns.
Okay.
Uh, concerns, but just, just an observation, the, uh, the sign for the ice cream parlor is probably bigger than what they're looking for in this, uh, on this building, if anybody took a look at that when they were, when they were out there.
Yeah, I think that's probably pretty close to being accurate, so. Alright, in that case, um, I move that the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be the lead agency.
Second.
Now, any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any, uh, opposed? Alright, that motion carries. And I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of non-significant for this action.
Second.
Yeah, you already did it.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any, any dissents? Alright, that motion carries. Then Christine, do you mind making a motion on this one?
No, no problem. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings, um, as set forth in the staff report, and, um, with the conditions that there will be landscaping around the base of the sign, and that the proposed lighting meets with the code, that it complies with the code. So I move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number four, 53 Carriage Hill Road, it's an area variance for a deck, they're looking for an eight-foot variance to replace apparently, which was an existing deck. Any concerns about this one?
Straight forward.
Alright, then Art, do you mind making a motion?
For you, anything, Paul.
You need findings?
Need findings, yeah.
Yeah.
You what?
Need findings.
Oh. I would offer these findings, then, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. The applicant indicated that this deck had, um, previously existed, it's consistent with other decks that are in the immediate neighborhood, and therefore, uh, I don't believe it'll have any undesirable change. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, this is the only method, uh, based upon the proximity of the house itself to the side lot line to obtain the desired result, uh, and an area variance is required. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, um, mathematically perhaps so, but based upon the impact of the house, or the, the location of the house as it exists, the impact will be insubstantial. Whether the proposed variation will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there will be no, uh, there's no evidence of any physical or environmental impacts on the neighborhood or district, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny it, and then I would offer those findings.
Second.
Okay, and then Art, if you want to make that motion?
It's still my turn? I move that the board approve the request for their area variance set forth on item four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings, and the results of site visits by board members. Approving this variance, the board adopts this finding, so set forth by the chair, and do we have a, do we have a?
Condition for board? No.
No staff report. And the conditions are that it just replace the old deck.
Correct?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Alright, then that motion carries. That brings us to item number five. Uh, this is a special use permit, an application for a special use permit, uh, for home occupation, and there is a staff report.
And Larry has recused on this one?
That is correct, so Tony S. will be voting.
Okay, thank you.
So, it may indicate that there were only, there would only be two non-resident employees, although we didn't ask. It's not clear whether the 25% of the residual buildings habitable, habitable space shall be devoted to such use as a garage.
I did figure it out, it's around 23%.
23%?
Yeah.
Okay. And the services shall be listed, no more fi, more, more than five clients or customers at one time, the testimony was, and the, and I think the physical layout, there's only two hair chairs, and even, even if they do some nail thing, that they can't have, that, so that's satisfied. And parking for each employee should be provided on-site, there's, the, the driveway is, you know, considerable, and there's parking behind a gate for, for the employees. Um, so I, I think that, that's met. There is a staff report, um, and which case, it offers, I think, these conditions.
Yeah, there were two conditions. One was related to the building department, making sure that they get their, you know, their inspections and their CO, um, that the operation should cease until that time, and then the second was, uh, to modify the hours of operation, because in their materials, they had a couple days where it was supposed to go later than seven, but under our code, 7:00 PM is the latest time for home occupation, so those, those are the two conditions.
Okay, and I do note that the county commented that it's a matter of local concern. So, I move that the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and decide itself to be, and declare itself to be the lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. I move that the ZBA determine the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of non-significant of this actions.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on that? And all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. And then Tony, do you mind making, um, this one?
Just to help me.
And there is a staff report.
I move to approve the request for, for a special use permit for, set forth by item number five. The decision is based on a review of the application, testimony by the applicant, testimony gathered during public hearing, uh, results of site, site visit by board members, and that, that it meets the criteria set forth by the tab code. The approval for a special use permit is subject to the following criteria, that was approved by the zone, or the zoning board, and hours were altered.
Right, and the other condition is that there has to be a CO.
A CO.
That the, the building department has to certify it, and, um, I, you know, I would point out there was a violation, and so they're supposed to stop any business until this gets rectified. Anything else to add?
Not for me.
All those in favor?
Okay, all those in favor? Lisa, did you have something?
Just who is the second, I'm sorry.
Who is the second?
The second.
Oh. Art?
Art, okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, so there was one re- Okay, so there was one, Larry recused himself and Tony S. voted aye, so that motion passes. Item number six was adjourned till March fourteenth. And that brings us to item number seven. This is simply, well, these, all these variances were previously approved. They expired, the testimony is that nothing has really changed, and so, let's see if there was a staff report on that.
There is not a new staff report, but there is a staff report from 2019, which is still valid today.
Okay, then, let's see, Diane, do you mind making this motion?
Can you just tell me the number, because I don't have an agenda in front of me.
Number seven. Number seven.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application testimony, the applicant testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Actually.
Staff report.
So I move. Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. That brings us finally to a request from the planning board to be lead agency on store space, Poughkeepsie Self-Storage Site Plan, Six Violet Avenue. I move, so what do we, I move to accept there?
Just that, yeah, we can consent to the planning board.
I can, I consent, I, I move that we consent to the request from the planning board to be lead agency on this item.
Can I ask what it is?
Yes, it's actually right across the street from the Violet Avenue project that we looked at tonight. It's the, where there's all the trucks and the small stealth storage buildings and all, that whole area, yeah, basically.
Okay, thank you. All right, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, and then I'll move to adjourn.
Second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you, you too.
Good night, everybody.